Okay, we'll call this morning's meeting to order. First thing is approval of the agenda.
Sure, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, citizens to be heard. We don't see any citizens. Approval of fills and vouchers.
Move to pay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. And that, we'll go into closed session right away.
Mr. Chair, I move to put it in closed session.
Second. Okay. We are, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are in closed session. Okay, we'll continue on with the meeting. First thing is the public hearing on request to amend zoning districts, remove an urban expansion overlay district. Tim?
Put it up here.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we're talking about an issue that came to the Planning Commission last month.
We have to open here.
I'll make a motion open here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess with that, we'll move on to the amendment to zoning district, sorry.
All right. As I mentioned, you saw this item about a year ago. It came back to the Planning Commission last month. It's a proposal to remove a zoning district, an overlay zoning district off of 7.66 acre piece of property on 46th Avenue South in Moorhead. You can see on the area photograph, the parcel in question. A year ago, there were some issues with what the underlying zoning district was. We got them that resolved. The underlying zoning district here is agricultural general. The overlay zoning district is urban expansion district. Last year, when it came, the recommendation from the Planning Commission was not to approve it. At the Planning Commission's meeting in July, the motion that was made and passed with one day vote was to recommend removal of the urban expansion district from this particular parcel. That recommendation is what been forwarded up to you today for your consideration. I guess you've got in your packet, you've got the original zoning request, your rezoning request, which also had a sketch on it as to what the applicants proposed to do with the property. Just to go through in the overheads, the urban expansion district is the purple area you see there. You can see where the proposed site is. It is directly adjacent to the City of Moorhead, right on 46th Avenue. The urban expansion district extends about a mile and a half, almost two miles beyond the location of the site. It is adjacent to some commercially zoned property. The hatched area is zoned commercial by Moorhead Township and also Clay County. This was an issue that we ran into before. We had a mapping error that moved our commercial district further north, which was incorrect. So it joins the city left side. It's in an ag, general district. It is adjacent to commercial property on the south side. Just to give you an idea of what it looks like, this is looking at the property from west to east. There is a house on the corner and another vacant lot. There's a quonset on the property and the property ends east, east of the light post there. On the other side, in recent years, there's been development directly north. There's apartment complexes. This is looking, you can see Highway 75 off on the west side of the picture. This again is looking west to east. Number of apartment buildings have been constructed. And there is a proposal, I believe the city has actually put it out to a contractor on some residential properties that are on the east side of these apartment complexes. This property in the City of Moorhead got back and then has worked with the contractor to...
So they'll continue to put high residential in between what's existing and the road? Oh, this isn't 75?
No, this is not 75. This is 46. I believe that the area located in the middle there, there is some other different zoning for it. I'm not exactly sure what it is. I don't know if the apartments will come following down to 46th. This is from the future land use map and from the growth area plan that the city had done back in 2009. And you can see the area that's circled up there as the proposed site and it falls into an area that the city sees as presidential.
What, excuse me, just go back to that. If I just go north of that proposed site, right, that little blue mark, what's a blue mark?
The blue mark, I believe, is park, park area or institutional. This is a Rehards School. This is a church. So I don't know what it would be exactly, but it is, I believe, an institutional zone or some type of public...
I was just saying, if they wanted to build north of that, on that blue mark, could they build there? They couldn't build there either.
Here?
Yes.
I don't know what's proposed in this area up here. It's in the City of Moorhead.
Thank you. Wayne?
Tim, is there, John, is there water and sewer there now or not? In that proposed site, the red circle. Can you go back, Wayne, Tim?
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, there's, whether the water goes past on the south side of the road or not, but there is, I believe, a fire pole in there someplace on the south side of the road.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, there would be on the north side of 46th Avenue, there would be water and sewer that's at the city limits. The city would typically not extend water and sewer service unless it was part of the city. So since it's on the side of the city limits, the city would not extend water and sewer.
Another question. If down the line, if that would be passed today by this board, and if down the line is annexed into the city and water and sewer are put in there, would they have to pay their share of that?
Well, I'll make a very generic statement. Typically, you would assess property based upon if they're benefited by the improvement. If at the, if in the future date, this city engineer and city council were to determine they were benefited, they would receive an assessment.
Right, sorry. It's just a little bit different showing of it, but the area is up here. And again, the city has got it, got a plan in there for residential from zero to four, zero to six, something like that.
Even with a pipeline there, that doesn't pose a problem?
Well, the pipeline, there's a requirement for maintaining setbacks from a pipeline easement. Doesn't say you can't, can't build there. There is a pipeline, I don't want to cut the whole thing here. Well, if we just go back to this one. There's a pipeline that comes through from the northwest and this is probably the easement that comes across right here. Comes across and then it goes southeast across this quarter section. So there is, you know, there's a pipeline there that would have to be designed around if there was development to go on there. Anyway, that just shows you where the property falls in the future land use maps. The proposal by the applicants is for storage. This was their original proposal. It only takes up about a third of the property, what they have proposed right now. The property line is up here to the east. It would be allowable if the urban expansion district were removed. The applicants could make an application to the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit for warehousing and storage. So that would be a use that they could apply for if the urban expansion district were to be removed. It would take them through a public hearing process at the Planning Commission again. It would not come back to the county court. That's pretty much the facts that came to the Planning Commission. You have their documents in your packet. I guess if you've got any questions on me.
Any questions, Tim? No, I guess we'll hear from the audience or applicants. Do you want to wish to speak?
That'd be great.
Sure.
I'm Brent Strand. It's Ray Kowalbog, our third partner. Ben Woodside was not able to attend because of the last minute notice we got. You know, Ray, if you want to just cover some of the timeline that we've experienced on the whole project, Tim covered a bunch of it right now.
Yeah, thanks for seeing us again. You know, this started out, and I just want to clarify something because it came up at the last time we were here. It was said to us that we were, I don't know, sophisticated investors and we just, you know, we purchased just outside the city limits for strategic purposes. We're just farm guys, you know, that's it. I mean, there was no...
Wish it wasn't smart.
Yeah. Intent to do anything other than, but to purchase this. We viewed this as an opportunity. I just live down in Tessa Terrace, so I live real close to where this is at. So when we purchased this, we purchased it with the intent of obviously doing this project, but it was zoned at that time commercial. But there was a kind of a whoops on the mapping, as Tim pointed out. And it came back after we purchased it that it's zoned agricultural. So we run into that issue. As we went forward, you know, we had a vote here on this exact issue and that went in our favor. And then there was another kind of a whoops. We, there was a notice error somewhere that didn't get, that didn't take place. And so then we had to re-vote and then, you know, that kind of didn't go our way. And then we're here today and as Brent had pointed out, we're kind of unprepared because I just got notice yesterday that we were on the agenda. So we don't have a bunch of, we were going to come a little bit more prepared with some drawings and some other things to, you know, to discuss and talk about. But we don't have those. You know, my other point was that I can make this as big or as small, you know, as we would want. I kind of like to think big, but we started with this kind of a smaller scale idea, just, you know, with the fact of, hey, let's try this, see how everything kind of works out. But, you know, and I've talked to Brent about this and Ben. I mean, I'd love to expand this and make it as big as possible. If it was allowable and have storage, moving business, I could make this thing into something real big and I could actually employ people. But I can't even go there because, no, we can't get off the ground at all. I still contend that we have a unique property and not to waste the city's time, and I know they did a lot of study on this overlay district in terms of, you know, where they want housing and all this and that. You know, I've talked at, you know, times to Mike Lewis on the city council and I understand his concerns about, you know, not doing spot zoning and this sort of thing. But I really believe we have a unique property for a couple of reasons. One is, and Jenny brought it out just a couple of minutes ago, that there is a pipeline that runs back to the east that you cannot build on. You can put a road over the top of it, which would be good, but you can't build a structure on top of it. You have to have setbacks. I don't think anybody wants, you know, a residential home, you know, real close to that in the first place. And if you are near a pipeline, it's just kind of up to, you know, it's kind of up to you. It's kind of wasted to maintain it if you do live by it, by one. So the other part of that, that makes that property unique is that, as you see here, we're off of Highway 75 enough that all those other folks along the corridor here of Highway 75, that if they wanted to, and I still think it should be commercial there also, but we won't get into that. But we're setback off of Highway 75, so we don't need ingress and egress off directly of Highway 75. You know, we're back here on 46th Avenue and we don't have to, and the DOT is very happy with us. Brent has talked to them about it, that we don't need direct ingress and egress right off Highway 75. And I just, I think those are a couple of things that make this maybe just a little bit different than the rest of the folks, you know, right directly along Highway 75. And that piece, and Tim, you could maybe speak to that right up in the corner. I don't know if it was Kevin or somebody had a question on that, on that north, that northwest corner right across 46. Yeah, that piece, I'm too short, right there. I think that's commercial. I think so, like commercial. And this piece here is, there's a bunch of basketball courts on it and kids play baseball out there. That's all it is, a bunch of basketball courts right in there. It's, I think it's Stonebridge Properties or something is the guy. The guy that owns Hebron Brick, it's his deal and his son-in-law is doing that. So that's a couple of thoughts, I guess, on kind of how this whole process started and, you know, why we're here and why we still think we, you know, we should, well, we'd like to see you folks think progressively and move forward with this.
You know, we've got a large amount of money tied up in it. We've been handcuffed now for over a year. We would love to be able to get going on it, but I know there's been a lot of talk between yourself and the city as far as working out, rather than spot zoning, working out something to correctly label the whole corridor. You know, in the spirit, I mean, I'd love to have the vote today and have my spot zone, but in the spirit of just doing what's right, I'd be willing to withdraw our application if you gentlemen and ladies are going to be working with the city to get something figured out, you know, hopefully even this year. I mean, I don't mind. What would be a real bummer would be to push you to vote and have you, you know, not be able to vote for it and then I have to wait a whole another year. So I guess with that spirit, we'd be willing to withdraw if there's going to be some progress between you and the city working on it, you know, shortly.
Yeah, and I want to reiterate again, and we talked about this before, you guys, and, sorry Jenny, I always...
That's fine.
It's kind of a gender term I use, but...
She's a guy. She's one of the guys.
One of the guys.
We want to work with you as a commission and the city and do this thing right. You know, from an aesthetic point of view, a utility point of view, we just, I mean, I see the growth down there and it's kind of to the southeast anyways, kind of more towards that Dilworth where the, you know, the new schools and stuff is going. It's not just directly south. I just think we can serve a big purpose there. And I like to do stuff right, so does Brent. I mean, we would, this would be, I think this would be an asset to the city. It would not degrade as you come in, you know, if you're coming in from Breckenridge, you're coming south to north. This would look aesthetically beautiful. It looks terrible right now out there. So I just, I want to make that clear that we want to work with all of you.
And then, you know, just our experience when we put up our hotel on that open empty lot, once we broke the ice, it happened fast. There was another hotel franchise wanting to put one right up next to us and now we have the car dealership building. And I just believe that it'd be similar thing. Once we get something started along that corridor, I think there'll be more people coming and it's just sort of nature of the beast.
Whether you guys pull off that overlay and that whole corridor or it's just more housing to that southeast direction. Because somebody else, I don't know if Tim had pointed that out, there's, where I pointed out where you have the basketball courts and all that stuff, yeah, there's a whole bunch of, yeah, down in that area, yeah, of stuff plotted off for housing down there. So I just think we serve a big need, especially with all two, the apartments to the north, it's just chock full of apartments in there, to the north, directly to the north.
That's all I have too.
Unless you guys have any questions.
I know, you started off saying that you weren't notified at this public hearing or something like that. Who requested this public hearing? Because I think it was in the paper on August 8th.
Yeah, we advertised it and normally notice gets sent to the applicant and not having a full stamp in the office, that was overlooked. We were notified yesterday.
Oh, okay.
They reached out to me afternoon yesterday and asked when it would, just let them know when it will be out for discussion and I did tell them that it was within less than 24 hours.
Okay, as I say, it was in, I got it, okay. Any questions for the applicants? There you go, thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, do we have any action on this that we want to...
We've got to close the hearing, ask one of the...
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm here on behalf of the City of Moorhead today. And first of all, just want to reiterate that the City of Moorhead is not anti-business or afraid of any type of issues. And just want to note for the record that we had reached out with the county and we've had some meetings about reconfiguring the overlay district. And we've set in place a timeline for events to occur to look at the standards within the overlay district, look at the size and scope and look at the uses within the district. One of the concerns that the City of Moorhead has with respect to this property is specifically the access on the 46th Street. There is currently, if the use were to expand well beyond what's being proposed, there's only one curb cut. I don't know if our city engineering department has approved that. The cost for the 46th Avenue were specially assessed against property, so this property is outside the city limits. The special assessments have not been levied against this property, so there would be a concern from the city's standpoint that this property would not be paying its cost, its fair share, so to speak, of 46th Avenue. That may or may not be able to be worked out with a curb cut agreement with the applicant. Those sorts of issues should be addressed in an ordinance. How do you accomplish access on the streets? How do you pay for those infrastructure? In its current form, the city is opposed. They're on record as opposing this rezoning. However, we want to work with the county and go through the overlay district and come up with a solution. And we're committed to that timeline. I know I spoke with the mayor this morning, who was not able to attend because she wasn't feeling well, but she's definitely committed to it. And she's emphasized that city staff need to work with county staff to bring something, bring this to a resolution. I know the last time I was here, the stone mill developers, that's the property just to the north that are putting together the apartment buildings, they had submitted a letter in opposition. I do know secondhand that some of the city council members that are on the west side of 75, some of their residents have expressed some concerns about this development. So at this time, we would ask that the commission deny it or if the applicant withdraws, we would want to work with the county to reach a solution regarding the overlay district. And I can answer any questions you might have, but...
So my question is if the applicant, can they choose to withdraw? Is that just that simple? They can withdraw their application?
They can. I don't think it affects the one-year reapplication, however. I don't think that the ordinance indicates...
But if they withdrew, then they could redo their request of any of their application and they don't have to wait another year.
I think the year waiting period is upon application, not upon...
I thought it was on action is what we talked about.
I haven't, I did not look at it because I didn't anticipate that occurring today, but I certainly would check into it. I believe it reads that one cannot apply one year after prior application.
Yeah, we better find out.
Do you want to check that out?
Yes.
He's going to go grab the ordinance.
Just, Mr. Chair, just for general information, I know the 60-day period of action, if the applicant withdraws, the 60-day does not apply, so...
That's correct, yeah.
It would make sense if it would extend to the application, but we'll see.
Maybe you want to review what the committee decided on a timeline for the applicants?
Current language in the ordinance relative to denial and resubmission stipulates that in the event the request for amendment is denied by the Board of County Commission, there's no further request for the same district change on the same property shall be considered for at least a year.
So it's a denial...
It requires a denial.
Denial would trigger it, so if they would withdraw, then they would not have a denial.
That's correct.
It would not trigger the 12 months.
And we can also overrule, if they do want a request, we can accept it too by a vote from the commission.
That's assuming that that change is made.
And in our works with the city, we're looking and trying to resolve that too, where an applicant could reapply to the commission, you know, at any time, basically after a denial. And working with the city to get all this resolved by the end of the year. And Tim and the city are going to look at, you know, setting things in place that would make the city more amenable to have this type of a, you know, business there. So we're trying to get it resolved, so, in a timely manner for business.
Wayne?
Two questions. To remove it today, we take four votes, correct?
Correct.
Let's take a consensus so these gentlemen know how we would vote and...
I don't think we can do that.
Yeah.
Should we?
Should?
Yeah, okay.
They have to make a vote. Are they closing?
We haven't closed here yet.
Okay, is there any other further comment from the audience? Yes?
Yeah, we, just to quickly address the attorney's concerns, we would gladly pay our share of any assessments or assessments or none of that. I mean, we're well used to paying taxes. Again, you know, we're not trying to get away from any, paying any taxes. So if we get annexed or whatever happens, we'd be expected to pay for the services. And right now, if our plan is able to go forward, we don't require any sewer or water. So it's not an issue. How do you want us to handle, I mean, what's going to happen? Do we have, do we decide right now whether we withdraw? Do we have, do we decide right now whether we withdraw?
Mr. Chairman, you know, we, we had a similar application, except for it was a, a little ways away from your property here, come before us, and that did not meet the four-fifths vote. And it was, it was because of the urban expansion district, and it was because of the failure to get together with the city like we had promised a year ago that we would do. And so, now, in the last few weeks, Commissioner Mojo and, and Commissioner Wayland are, along with the city, we're pushing that issue to have that move forward. In 2005, when the urban expansion district came on board, it made an awful lot of sense, and our, our county board voted to put in the urban expansion district. I was part of that vote to do that. Having said that, circumstances come up that you don't foresee. And I, I think there's some opportunities for you. I can, like, I can't tell you what you should do or not do, but if the vote is taken today, I'm gonna have to take my same vote that I took two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, whatever it was. And that was even on the advice of our attorney, that if we, you know, it was more on a spot zoning issue. That was part of what, what my concerns were then. Even with that in mind, I, I, I've been talking with our board here, and I firmly believe that whether it's your issue or it's another issue by somebody else, two years from now, under the same format, if something comes before us once, and it is denied, that that should not lock that person out from being able to come back within the next year. Maybe there can be something, willing to change things, that maybe can be more acceptable to the government entities. And, you know, so I'm, I think it's on the, the planning commission agenda tonight to, to talk about that. And in other, in other words, when this happened to you last year, rather than you waiting this whole year, if you would have made some changes that would have been, you know, taken into the city, or there would have been more dialogue, which there hasn't been, then you wouldn't have had to wait this long. And my concern right now is, based on a vote that could happen today, you could end up waiting another year with your application in place. Even though, we might be able to fix it for some. It might not fix your issue, I don't know, but the dialogue is there now. But I would prefer to see you be able to be heard in a shorter time than a year. So, that's like, I guess, that's, it's your choice, I, I'm not gonna, you know, but that's, I think that's kind of where we are here on, on this right now.
No, and, no, thank, thank you, Board, for, you know, what I've heard, they, the CSU are gonna proceed with the city and try to do things right, which we're interested in too. So, if we have to wait, you know, a little longer to do things right, not a problem. So, I, Ray, we'd like to withdraw, we'd like to withdraw our application.
And that's in the record then of the public hearing, still, we're still...
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I guess my question would be, that's okay with them withdrawing?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, we got a motion to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay. We're now back in session again. Do we have to open up the session again, or?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I would, we have to open it up, I guess, first.
No, we don't.
We don't?
No. You opened, you closed the hearing, but now we're back in the... I would, I'd like to make a motion that, that we approve the request for withdrawal of the application on this issue by the applicants on this rezoning issue.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would also, because the planning commission tonight is going to review, I don't know, I'll say it's the proposal that I brought forward here a few weeks ago regarding the changing our, which is, is it changing the actual zoning?
It's gonna be a text amendment to the ordinance, yes.
To the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So, so I, I would move that, that, that we show support to the planning commission, that we would like to see, Jenny, you might have to help me out here, that we would like to see changes to the ordinance that would allow applicants who have been denied an opportunity to be reheard by the county board in a lesser time period than one year, provided there would, there would be four-fifths support by the county board.
If you don't mind, the verbiage that was given to the planning commission further would be, Clay County is proposing an amendment to the development code, which would allow an applicant for rezoning to seek a waiver of the one-year waiting requirement after denial.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah. Said waiver request would be heard by the Board of Commissioners and could be allowed if approved by a four-fifths vote.
Okay, so, so my motion would be that we would support that resolution?
That doesn't have to go to the planning.
Well, I want to go to the planning.
It's gonna be heard, it's gonna be tonight.
I want that to be presented as testimony to the law.
I'll second that.
It's probably important that they know we were in support of that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Hold it, carry it.
Thank you. What time is that at, Tim?
Seven.
Jenny, you can speak first.
Thank you for coming forward again. Steve, the next thing, I'm Steve Lanson with resolution to approve the state and Minnesota joint powers agreement. It refers to Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force.
Come on in.
No worries, Steve.
What this is, is a joint powers agreement with the states, and it's a federal grant that the state is administering. And this is a no-cost reimbursement grant to Clay County, just in case we end up with a serious internet crimes against children case. We have one of our juvenile officer, our juvenile officer that's been part of this task force, and it's a renewal of that. And what it covers is equipment, training, overtime, because there's a possibility that we might go a little bit outside of Clay County to assist other counties that aren't equipped with the expertise or the training to handle a case like this. Like, like an internet luring or something like that.
Okay. I like the way you started out with no cost.
I'll move to approve the resolution, I support.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post. Okay, pass.
Thank you.
Pretty easy on you today, Steve.
Yeah, I liked that.
Do you want to take a break before we do the budget, or are we okay? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break before we go into budget discussion. Okay, we'll call and beat you back to order.
That may be why they go along with somebody else.
First, next thing on the agenda is the budget discussion with County Administrator Robbie Ferg and our auditor treasurer Lori Johnson. Take it away.
Mr. Chair, our awesome.
Awesome.
Amazing.
Amazing, that's what it was, amazing.
I didn't have that on my list.
Yeah, you didn't, yeah, so it got overlooked.
Well, you can add that next time, if you call somebody, just get some superminister. Did we hit enough on the county minister, just plain county minister?
Yeah, that's the...
That was sufficient, okay?
Absolutely. Yeah, you didn't even have to mention my name, really. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and members of the commission. We, we've got a lot of work to do on your 2017 budget proposal. And what I handed out today and, was just kind of a memo of information, and then I also handed out just three sheets that show the new requests. I don't know that you had given them. We had some straightening out to do on that. You've had some presentations of people that are asking for things, and we hadn't really clarified that on a, on a spreadsheet, so I sent that, I, I handed that out today. And then just, you have these other two pages, and it's just a brief one-line of the different departments and their budgets. But if we can go over the memo quickly, or whatever, to kind of define how we see the budget picture right now, and just to kind of remind you of some things that we did last year that are affecting the budget this year. So, the first item on there, I don't know if you recall that or not, I know you'll remember it when, when we talk about it, but last year we set the max levy, and then Julius Vought, the Director of Corrections, came in with a additional budget request of $437,000. That was added to the budget, but was not added to the revenues, because we were after the time that we could set the maximum levy. I don't know if you remember that or not, but that then had to come from reserves. So, that gets added in to this year's budget request. So, all of these requests aren't new. Last year, we utilized $200,000 worth of social services reserves that have been now added to the budget requests this year. And that may change, however you folks want to go. But also with the general fund reserve dollars, we utilized $200,000 in addition to those last year of the 437. And then this, we've already taken out of the requests, and our plan to use reserves for it, and, but this, so this is for information's sake, just so you keep it on your radar, that we are not assessing for that $400,000 in that abatement policy that you guys have supported. So, but that is not in the request, so I, and I've not included it in the bottom. And as I stated, I sent you an email yesterday showing that the insurance costs, we had estimated that it would be about a 12% increase this year again. And in fact, Darren Brooke came back yesterday and said that the increase is a 1.7% increase, which would be around $80,000. So, that's quite a change, and just for discussion on that, I, I guess I, we could ask Darren to explain that a little bit more. I know that's what I asked him yesterday, because we were, we're under the impression, and I think I was correct, that it's a 30-month average, but he tells me it's a weighted average, that the last six month, or 12 months, is it, Darren?
Twelve.
Are, are weighted at 66.23%, and the other, then one-third of the rate that's established is based on later claims. So, how it goes from what it did last year of about a 15% increase, when it's a weighted average over 30 months drops to a 1.7, you know, we, we really struggled with that, and they did too at the meeting. They said, are you sure you didn't make a mistake and things? Because, and then he assured me that the committee now is working on a four-year average, which would make some more sense. You wouldn't have these spikes. I mean, that's quite a spike, including last year for 1.7. Sure, it's good news for us, but it's, it's not a very stable way to do our business. So, did I miss anything on that, Darren, on that insurance? Okay. And then, last year, or this is just again, for information's sake, the social service increase this year shows a $986,000, because it's including the $200,000 in reserves. That's why when you go to the bottom, unless you only see $786,000. Now, Lori and I talked about this presentation today, but I put these numbers together after we had talked yesterday afternoon and this morning. So, if you see something wrong, don't be afraid to holler. So, the current levy increase for 2017 stands at a $2.9 million increase. What makes up that? Now, there's, all of the budgets, of course, make that up, but I just wanted to highlight some that the $200,000 social service reserve that you used last year is added in there. The general fund reserve of $200,000 is added in there. The correctional reserve dollars that were utilized last year of $437,000 are added in there. The correctional request for this year, for 2017, is $393,000. The social service request is $786,000, $786,000 of new request, new dollars, I should say, not renewed request. Public Health, last year had a large reserve coming in, and we normally flop that over and, and credit that in one year, and that was extra-large last year, so that made their request for dollars last year was, was lower than normal. So, when they made the request this year, we didn't, weren't relying on those reserve dollars, so their jump is $220,000 request this year. Health insurance of now $80,000. A contracted poll up with the union contracts, if we're spreading over everyone, is $816,000 increase. Juvenile detention, if you remember, Steve asked for an additional two beds, at $83,500, plus the seven beds that we had already purchased were an increase from 79.5 to 83.5. So, for the secure unit, and you remember, there's two units over there, there's the secure unit and the non-secure unit, that's about a $200,000 request for the secure unit. That's what you pay as an allotment to the secure unit that is spread over the 11 county areas. And then we operate a 15-bed, non-secure unit, and that increases about $70,000, right in that area, $76,000. So, for juvenile detention from last year to this, to next year, from, I should say, 2016 to 2017, is about a $270,000 increase in detention. And then, new requests, as I've, I've attached that to the, to the document here that I handed out. And if you recall, there were two new attorneys requested from the attorney's office. And then, Steve Larson, juvenile detention director, is also asking for one, and that'll be spread over the two units that I talked about. And you'll also see social services having dollars of interest in there, because the $100,000 of the revenue to go to the attorney's office will actually come from social services, and that is not in that, this budget request yet, because it's a new request. So, if you'll see, out of the items here, about the 10 items that I've listed, they total about $3.7 million of adjustments. Some are using the reserves, or, or adding the reserves in to request those dollars, and that we didn't get last year, and, and a lot of it is increases. Now, there's other increases in other departments too, but you can see the, the levy isn't showing as much of an increase as the requests are, so there's been some changes in revenue dollars back and forth. And I, if I was you, I'd ask, why aren't they balanced out, but for, for many different reasons, so.
Are there, are there any departments, I mean, I see we're taking out of reserve several different places. Are we adding to reserves at all during the year? I mean, at the end of this year, does it look like we're gonna add to anybody's reserves?
Not this year, because we actually took some from the fund. We took over a million dollars for 2016 out of the revenue fund fund balance, so.
And no one, no one's budget came in under this year. I mean, right now, it doesn't look like anybody's gonna come up.
Well, individually, on smaller departments, but as a fund, everything looks like it'll be, possibly Road Bridge might come in, you know, revenues over expenses, but the rest of them, we actually took fund balance from, so.
Yeah, we don't know that for 2016 yet.
Well, I, I realize that, I was just wondering what the picture looks like.
Well, I, to tell you the one, one thing, the, I'll just use corrections as example. That for 2015 came in about $300,000 under, their expenses were under their, their revenues. And we saw a huge increase, and there's... And we saw a huge increase in theirs last year. And you're seeing a huge increase this year. So we personally feel there may be some room that we can do some reductions there. But you've heard over the course of the year of juvenile being overloaded, out-of-home placements being overloaded, and our juvenile and out-of-home placements, and our jail population. And that's where you're seeing the huge, huge hits throughout this budget.
Yeah, I realize those departments are taking a big hit. And I just wanted, are any of our departments coming in that we can draw money from?
I'll tell you what, I think we do a pretty fair job of accuracy in our budgets. It's the unknowns that we can't guesstimate real posts and the ones that we deal with the outside consumer. And.
The out-of-home placements are one of, that's based on what we think might happen, right?
Right.
So, you know, so budgeting for it, I mean, at least in the situation we're in right now, it just seems to me that we could reduce that considerably. And if we run, if that's the way it turns out, you know, that to me, that's what reserves are for. If we get into a bind with that, then we would transfer some money to make the difference then during the year, rather than budgeting for it now and making a, you know, and having to increase the levy just based on that.
They have, they're not budgeting for the high right now, though. They haven't done it over an average. So they haven't, haven't looked forward to try and budget for the peak. They've at least balanced it out a little bit by prior years.
What is their, what is their reserve at right now?
Seven and a half, 7.5.
I remember when it got down to what, 1.5?
Yeah, no, they've got a, they've got a healthy reserve right now.
Yeah, so they've got a healthy.
You know, I, you think about this, and it was, you know, we're not under the restrictions right now of the state. But, you know, I just start to think, what if these things would be being proposed right now, and we had levy limits on? What would we be doing? I mean, you know, we're thankful there aren't levy limits. I think most counties are glad there aren't levy limits. But, but one thing about the levy limits, it really, it really forces you to, and, and right now, our, everything is up, 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 up. And as Commissioner Gross was asking, is there any that are down? And at what point in time is it appropriate to say, we've built these reserves for a reason? And taking some from reserves isn't, the sky isn't going to fall down. The only thing is, if something doesn't turn around. Grant talks about the significant one being the out-of-home placement. Hopefully with, you know, these new committees, and Commissioner Mojo is on one. We're trying to, we're trying to, and Frank, I think you're on that too, I believe. But trying to, you know, we can sit and always just pay this. Or we can maybe try to find out, what can we do from a prevention standpoint that helps lower these things? And I think, you know, I think with what our board is doing, that we're on track to at least not be blind to it, but try to find some ways to drop it. And then, and I think with, with the brain power that we have, a lot of it between our members here and the staff, we've got to come up. Quite frankly, we've got to come up with some other solutions because what we're seeing in that, in that one thing alone is just not sustainable. It's, we could, we can't possibly on an annual basis keep raising that, right? Nor are you in agreement, aren't you?
Absolutely.
So we have to do something. And we might as well do it now. No? No?
Well, and Mr. Chair, I'll just point out, he's absolutely right on out-of-home placements. But that's not the only one that's breaking our bank.
I know.
Corrections. $700,000 increase last year. And so that was as high as our out-of-home placement. But to go back to what Rhonda has done, is she's in excess of $3 million for county dollars. She's going to spend in 2016 about $3.7 million in out-of-home placements. And about $3.1, $3.2 will be county dollars for that. She's budgeting about $2.25. So she is taking her best educated guess at looking at. But I don't disagree with the fact that there may be some flexibility there. We're not doing that with corrections. We're going to the high point and budgeting for that. So I think there's some room there, you know, and maybe with juvenile as well, you know.
When you, when you look at the corrections component of this, sure, it's bad right now. But the plan that we have moving forward, and, you know, and even the discussion about the million dollars that we're having right now that's going to those things, that's not even going to be reused towards bricks and mortar the new facility. But what we are going to be able to do is we are going to be able to take that money and apply that towards the additional staffing that the new facility will be needed. So hopefully, moving forward and with the behavioral health component of this, and we start to see some recivatism. And I still believe that we have more income-based abilities when that facility opens than we've even talked about today. And if you talk to the sheriff, the sheriff has already said that U.S. Marshal Service is already waiting to sign a contract with us for revenue. So we have some, you know, so from the correction standpoint, I think, I think we're probably seeing the peak of the bad.
Yeah.
You know, but again, we're.
We can get things stabilized. We had all these.
We're doing something about it. And that's exactly why, you know, why we've asked Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Gross to serve on that deal on the out-of-home placement, to try to come up with, what can we do to get us that we're at the peak now and start doing something the other way. But until then, I think we have to look at reserves to help.
I think it's important that we look at reserves on some things as well. But I think there are some issues where we could look within what current spending and trends have been for several years. One issue that I brought up, and it may be minuscule in comparison to some of these larger expenses, is the amount of cell phones that the county currently pays for. And that number's about $74,000, $75,000 annually. And I think things like that, it's important to look at and see, is it important that we pay 100% of this continually? Or are there certain departments that only need a handful instead of, it's not a perk of the job, so to speak? And so I would appreciate departments looking at those, maybe with a fine-tooth comb, on spending that's been there for a while that could be eliminated.
I, you know, I guess I do have some comment. I was just looking over some of the items that you brought up as far as possible discussion, you know. Now, look at these things that, excuse me. We say, well, we can't project sometimes what out-of-home replacement is this. We can't project what corrections are going to have. But three years ago, we projected that the COLA is going to go up, and we gave them a 3.25% raise. It didn't go up. We're still giving them a 3.25%. And I don't know if the contract's going to be changed. I don't know if that stuff can be due or not. But I mean, that's in there, you know. It's just, I mean, we planned ahead for that and gave it to them. So it's just, I feel somewhere along the line, we need some gift back, you know. It's just, you know, a 3.25% increase when COLA hasn't really gone up at all is a pretty good increase.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think that question needs to be asked. Is it a very high probability of the unions being willing to open contracts for discussion? No, the probability is, but I think we would be neglectful if we didn't ask the question. You know, because maybe, I'd hate to say everything is negotiable, but maybe they're interested in some things of assurance into the future. Maybe it requires opening for a dialogue. And if the absolute answer is no, 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 we bring that back, that answer. But I think it would be neglectful not to address that and afford the employees of the county the opportunity to help us with this issue.
Well, I agree, fully agree with that. I just look at, we're treating our employees good, I think. I think rightfully, they should be treated good. They're doing a good job. But we are rewarding them. And I think we need some sort of return too in this budget. You know, somewhere along the line, we need some sort of input from them that, hey, what can we do?
Yeah.
You know, is it our job to look for these, oh, we should cut $1,000 here, $1,000 there? They have to get involved as a department. Where can we help, you know? And it's just, I mean, we're rewarding you for doing a good job, so we expect a good job.
Well, I think the other side of that issue though is, I mean, we're dealing all the time with, you know, trying to find employees to fill jobs and staying competitive with the market in terms of what, you know, what we pay people and trying to retain the good employees that we have. So, I mean, we have to consider that too. I mean, we went through many years, you know, of giving none to small increases. And so, you know, I mean, this is one, one little thing negotiated. But a lot of it was based on the history of where we had been for a number of years, so.
And the competitive, Mr. Chair, for me, the competitive nature of what was happening in North Dakota, which we're sitting next to Fargo, and that's what, and I think I, I think I mentioned that last time, that's what ballooned it to it. But again, like the chair is saying, okay, that now has changed that picture. And should we be asking for consideration?
That's a very good point that you made there. Thank you.
As a former two-time president of Morehead's Largest Union and a negotiator a couple of different times for Morehead's Largest Union, Ward Education Association, asking the union if they want to give in on their raises or increase, that's a total waste of time. That is not going to happen. Unions do not act, they don't act that way. And if you go to the union, I mean, with all due respect, their concern is, well, I'm not going to say this, but you're wasting your time.
Just wanted to make a point, Danny.
Danny?
My question is in regards to these reserves. Do we have a level at which we, one, are comfortable with? Or two, could we have a standard that they stay at? So if things are over and above, it just would be something that we automatically apply to the levy or continue to add if it's below?
The state auditors make a recommendation of approximately 50% of our expenditures. And so we're not even quite there yet in the general fund. And that's where we need it the most. Rowden Bridge and social services have some state grants and things that they depend on. So we don't quite need that level for them. But we're close, we're almost there with the general fund, but not quite.
I've argued, I've argued the state auditor requirements for a long time. I think they're, I think they're bogus in many ways. And I'm just going to come out and say it. I think, I think for one thing, they don't recognize some of the things that we do. It doesn't come into their equation. I would, I would be more interested in, if you, if you want to see something like that, take a look at years ago, what the Association of Minnesota Counties put out. In terms of, they have a different feeling on what reserves should be.
So then, based on those recommendations, are we there?
Well, we're certainly, we're certainly there when it comes to the, what the counties, the organization are. But I, if you do a poll of all the counties, 87 counties, and ask them how many are meeting the state's auditors requirement, you're probably going to find them all being low.
No, actually, our surrounding counties are pretty much at those levels. Yep.
Mr. Chair, how much do we have in reserves, if we be?
You know, each fund is different.
The total?
I would say probably 15 million.
Thank you.
Approximately, with everything added together.
Okay. And I want to chime in on this COLA issue. You know, the 3.25 COLA that was in the union contracts, as Commissioner Wayland said, was kind of a, it was kind of an agreement based on several years of some being low, and some being lower. And now, for example, on those three-year COLAs, we're going to go from 3.5 back down the following year, I think it is, to two.
Two, yeah, two.
You know, so.
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Okay, then there's a. Yeah, but I believe there was a couple of years where there was no COLAs, not too long ago.
Not since I've been here, six years.
Okay, well, it's still not.
It would have been, I think, before you. When things really kind of all caved in in 2009, so.
But all of that, all that adds in. And I, we sit and hear it time and time again from Health and Human Services, you know, which includes public health. We hear it from the attorney's office. We hear it from corrections. We're, we compare ourselves in the pay scale module with a group of 14 similar counties. That's how we establish our pay grid in this area. And we neglected, or we continually neglect to look at the one major factor we should be looking at and where our competition is and where all of our workers go. And that's across the river. And so Commissioner Wayland is right on this deal. You know, with what's going on over there, if we're not going to be competitive with our wage, we're going to lose all of our good people to jobs in our neighboring communities that we want them to stay here on. So I.
Which is also a reason that we have to keep this in check because we'll not only lose them, employees, to North Dakota, but we'll lose residents to North Dakota.
Well, I guess the point, you know, am I completely, am I opposed against the 3.25? No. I'm saying we are paying them, we're giving them good increase, and I want to resolve from that. You know, I want some sort of, you know, let's get something for that 3.25. You know, we're saying you're good employees. We want you to stay here. We want to pay you good. Where's their input in the budget, you know? You know, it's just, is it us that are going to say? I said it before, do we say, take $1,000 here, $1,000 there? Are they saying anything? You know, all I see here is increases, increases, increases. I know, and it's, it's stuff that they can't do much about probably, but.
Unfortunately, the majority of our departments, their biggest expenditure is salaries. And so they don't have control over, it's like, okay, here's, I'll give you a.
It's the same as any business. Every business is.
Yeah. No, the only, the one thing, so we see the, in every department, every year, we see the, you know, like you say, the wage goes up in every department. And there's two factors there. There's the step factor, and then there's the COLA factor, as to why they go up. But one of the areas that I don't know, and it would be interesting to see if Darren could run something on this for us, is where, where is it, where do we see during the course of the year? Because we hear about it all the time, when an employee leaves and a new employee comes up, and we hear there's this savings. And but where's the savings coming in? Because when we're, when we do the increases, are we, are we doing the increases based on the actual compensation from the previous year? Are we doing it based on the previous year's budgeted dollars?
No, actually.
It is on the actual?
The salaries? That's based on each individual person and their salary and when they get their raise.
Working for, okay.
Yep, it's.
Okay, but that's assuming then that each and every one of them works the entire year. And the problem is, is every year, we have some who leave. And then there's a time gap sometimes between when that person is left and when the new hires can come on. Every time we do that, there's a savings to the county. And but, you know, Darren, have we ever done anything to determine what kind of annual dollars those are?
Sometimes there isn't a savings if they're a long-term employee because we're paying.
I understand. But most of the ones we've seen, that I've seen come before us, the supervisor who comes in and requests it says, well, it's going to be a savings to the county of so many dollars. And where does that go?
Mr. Chair, very quickly on that, the assessor's office lost an employee last year, a long-term employee. You will see in, I can't remember what page their budget is on, but their budget request is less this year than last year. And it's because of the very situation that you say. you say. So it's easily seen, it may be a small department, unfortunately, and, and Social Services has had a lot of turnover. And I think last year we saw a real, that really helped out the budget last year in Social Services because there's so many other services that are passed through. But that's, that's one good example of what you're saying.
I guess some of the points I'm trying to make, I realize that the contract increase, there's nothing that employees can do about that. I'm not asking them to do anything. Well, I have become a request, we need more, we need new computers. We need this program, we got to buy this program. This is going to run more efficiently, we need this program. Where, is there efficiency coming in when we buy a new program? I mean, do we see a return when we say we're going to spend $200,000 to buy a new program to revamp the way we enter things? Do we get a result from that? I mean, do we ever measure?
Does it measure?
Do we get a return in our investment, you know, when we say we bought a two hundred, you know, twenty new computers and we bought a new program? Do we operate more efficiently? You know, and I guess that's what I'm asking employees.
I've asked a very specific question because, hate to admit it, no, I'm not. I'm old school. I like paper and, and I like to talk to people and determine where they're at rather than just looking at computers. But what I get assured, and I think it's somewhat accurate, is that with the new programs and the advancement and the speed and that it doesn't reduce the number of employees that we have, it just helps us not increase the number of employees that we need to hire. And I go down and Laurie and I talk about these budget things and of course, take some of her technology away on that computer and she'd be lost.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to do anything without.
Well, I realize we need computers, you know, but are we operating more efficiently because of all the stuff that we're getting?
And you have to hold.
Any business in the county, and if they're working on an antiquated system, the amount of time that their employees have to do, take to complete a simple task is far more than what if you have.
We'd have higher requests.
Yeah, we don't get a lot of requests for new employees. I mean, and that's presumably because we have, you know, efficient systems that help them get more work accomplished without adding more staff, so.
We do have one example, and I, it was because of the, again, I'll jump now back to the recorder's office. Two years ago, or three years ago, the recorder's office reduced one employee. The transactions were down, but the other thing was, a lot of people could look up their own information online, so that reduced. Laurie reduced one position in her office last year or the year before because of efficiencies and mostly electronics. So there is some.
And how about that whole file storage system that we spent a lot of money on bringing in where we, where we now scan all of our stuff in and, you know, I think there's a big savings there, especially in, in social services.
Social services, because now everybody has access to that report that needs to. And frankly, she even freed up some office space and put people in it that she was paying for just to have storage cabinets in. So I, your question is legitimate. It's just, it's really hard. In fact, I had a constituent that wanted to meet to talk about that issue of, how do we measure that we're doing a good job? And of course, the only thing that, unless you want to invest an awful lot of time internally to do that, we, if we go to the auditor, state auditor's website, they have different comparisons of different counties that I passed out to you in the first distribution. And per taxpayer, I think we're eighty-two out of eighty-seven counties per capita cost of county services. It's not the best, but we're within five, five positions of being the best per capita, not necessarily per tax capacity and different things, but per person.
Well, I think I'm standing, I stand corrected, and I thank you for putting in this stuff and thank you for your good work and.
Mr. Chairman, this has been a good conversation today, and there's some things here that are important. The most important thing to me right now is, is the latest numbers that I still have, still has us at a nine point nine nine levy increase. Now, I understand that that's going to be a little change with the recent insurance issue, but all the other demands are still there and still on the table. My concern is, is that when you, when you put that, that number on top of what each individual community has to do with their increases, and when you take a look at all these school referendums that have gone on in all the, all the neighboring communities, and you start adding all those on to a property tax, there's going to, there's going to be a real sticker shocker to everybody in this county if, if we're not careful. And.
It's contrary to what we're trying to accomplish with the sales tax for the jail referendum, too, so.
Yeah, we, it's, it's something we've got to, so far, everybody is sticking to their guns. Nobody, nobody can reduce theirs. We understand all that, but the, a ten percent increase in, in cost of, of what we need to do in the year is, is high. It's really high.
Well, we may have to, as a board, come to a resolution about what, what that percentage is that's acceptable and then work at it from that point. It's, you know, I guess that's probably, setting that would probably help make things move one way or the other.
Yeah, so what is that number?
Mr. Chair, I was going to say, whatever number we set, I think we're going to have to go under reserves.
Oh, there's.
I have a question.
And how much do you want to go under reserves? That's, we're not going to decide that.
Well, they're screwing into the reserves and, and you know what, we haven't, everybody in this first round in the budget, they, they pretty much look for what they need. And sometimes, sometimes what, what they want and their needs and, and what can be afforded might not be the same thing. And, you know, so it would be unfair to just tell one department to go look. So I think we need to tell all departments to go look at ways to trim this.
I feel sometimes we are constantly, and I've done it myself, but saying, departments go look, departments go look, and that is important. However, there are a number of agencies outside of our county umbrella that we continue to give money to, and they're, they're very important causes. But sometimes I wonder if we don't scrutinize what those new requests are to the same capacity that we scrutinize our own employees. And sitting in this building, I sometimes feel that it's more important to support the employees that are under this umbrella than continuing to grant increases in other areas. And I understand we're on all these different committees, but if we're on a committee, does that then mean that we're supposed to approve the request no matter what and then scrutinize these? I understand that this is only my second budget cycle here, but we, we don't scrutinize those requests to the same capacity that we do these.
Well, I, you know, I think, I think we have done that in the past, and you, you have a perfect point. Because we certainly, we certainly shouldn't be granting any, any large increases to an outside agency that, that we're not, that we can't even do for our own county. I, I think we've always been pretty careful about that. Right now, some of these outside agencies that you see some bigger numbers on, those bigger numbers that are being requested are mostly at the request of Health and Human Services through, through Rhonda and her group. You know, so, so some of that is at, is at the direction of, of Social Services, that they, there's increases there, but they're outside agencies that are providing the services. But.
But like five thousand dollar increments over the course of a large amount of requests may seem miniscule, but you add it up and then that pays for our health insurance.
I agree, I agree.
Increase, so.
And I, and I don't think, because any of those have got those requests in, none of them have been approved.
Right, but I, I think it's important that we.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
In the past, we did, used to go through every outside agency one at a time and do that. And, and recently, I think Rhonda has actually limited them on the front end, rather, and I think there's still some in there that we haven't looked at yet, but, so it certainly wouldn't have to look at those.
When is our, when is our preliminary?
Thirty.
Of September? We've got work to do.
Well, Mr. Chair, I guess we're certainly willing to do some work on this, but we need some direction as to where you want us to look. I mean, I'll tell you the truth, I, personally, I could go through here and, and pick apart some of these amounts. I'll make a guess at next year. Laurie and I can do that. But we need to know where you want to concentrate on. Employee, employee costs are high. You know, you, I don't know, you know, sometimes you've done in the past, if somebody's asking for a new position or even to replace a position. Maybe that position needs to stay open for a while next year.
No, you do raise a good point, and this does go back to, Laurie, was it, I think that was back in the last couple of years of VJ's deal, where we, where we did have a, a really a freeze on, on hiring. And it helped. I mean, when you're, when you're, when you're having this difficult of a time to, to manage your, your budget, hard decisions do have to be made. And sometimes we need to make do with what we have. Our, the citizens who sit, or retired people that sit in their homes have to make hard decisions every day on, on what they do and what bills they can pay.
Yep.
And why, why should, why should it not be any different for, for us here? And so I.
Well, you probably need something, a number to work off of. That's why they're sitting there waiting.
Yeah, but one of the, one of the things that I, the first go around here, and this is where, where I kind of, I like what our chairman has, has said in the past, that, you know, it appears to me that, you know, the first go around here, we should be asking department heads to do what they can to lower what they've presented so far. Because, you know, the question can be asked of all of those, would you, would you rather, as a department head, would you rather try to find some things to, to reduce, or would you rather have the five commissioners do it? And I think they know better. And I'm agreeing, and hope I'm not taking the words out of your mouth, Frank, but, but it seems to me that, that if I was a department head and if I thought, geez, Commissioner Campbell or Commissioner Gross or Commissioner Wayland or Desmojo or, or any of the commissioners up here are, are going to make cuts to my department, maybe, maybe I want to be the one to first say what needs to go.
No, I, I think you're right. They want to make their own decisions.
No, so before, before we do it, I, I think there should be opportunity. Now, Laurie, you're the head of a department. Would you rather have, make cuts for you, or would you like, if you had to do it, would you rather do it yourself?
I'd much rather do it myself.
Karen, you said it was nine point nine, and with the insurance decrease, are we, are we lower to nine percent or something?
Well, we're at ten point three six, so.
Well, I, I mean, realistically, for, for me, I mean, and I don't like that number, but I mean, somewhere in that five to six percent range sounds more.
Before growth, before considering age growth.
Yeah, that I could, I could live with, I guess, on a year like this. It's a, so.
Yeah, it's around ten with up in the growth right now, that four hundred and eighty-five reduction, eighty-four, eighty-five reduction. It's, it's around that, nine and a half, ten.
So, I mean, if you have some kind of a number like that, then when, at least when a department head is trying to, they know that, okay, I got to cut three percent more than I've already done, or four, whatever, so to try and get the reasonable level, so.
I was just going through our external agency, what they're requesting, you know, library, one point seven five historical, one percent, soil and water, three percent. You know, a lot of them are almost sitting at right at one percent or two percent increase, you know. It's not our external agencies that are really killing us that much. You know, yes, we could, if we cut them all out, you know, okay, we can save some money, you know, but we are supporting them.
If you're at ten percent now and you want to go down to five percent, you're cutting payroll. You're cutting payroll.
You're cutting what?
Just a minute, I dropped the floor. You're cutting payroll, you're reducing staff. That's how, it's, that's the bottom line. You can only get rid of so many of these and so much paper. You're cutting people's jobs and livelihood. And that's what's just more the shocking part. That's what you want to do, that's fine, but you're cutting payroll. You're getting rid of people's jobs. That's what's going to happen. The farther down you go on your levy, that's what's going to happen, as long as you know that.
Going from ten percent to five percent, and Laurie, as in my, is just simple math we're just doing here, is one point five million dollars out of thirty million dollars. I don't, I don't know that we have to be looking for a whole lot of lost wages in that. I think part of it, part of that can come from reserves. I, when we have fifteen million dollars in reserves, when I've seen our reserves sitting in some of these at not a fraction of what they are today, we built them up in our good years for being able to do things in times like this. I do not agree with Commissioner Angersall that this all has to be cut and pay. I, I don't believe it, and I still think we can do it without that. Now granted, there's a difference in cut and pay versus maybe putting, putting some sort of a temporary moratorium on rehires.
That's.
That's, that's different. That's different. That's not taking, I'm not proposing for one minute that we go and let any one of our county employees leave today. And I don't think anybody at this table wants to do that. Well, you're talking reserves, but you are talking about making some hard choices during the course of the year where, and we've done it before. And then we, we had these furlough programs and all these things that, that helped out. We haven't even been talking about that. I know, I saw a memo from Brian about maybe relooking at some of those things again, early retirements. Some of those things helped out when we, when we went through some of these things before. But these, those are, those are options for employees, not mandatory.
Well, what's the percentage we can live with? So they've got some idea which way, you know, where to start dealing with this. So, like I said, I am living in that five to six range myself somewhere right now, so.
So is that, is that before new construction dollars?
Yeah, I mean, so that would even, you know, so I mean, basically, if you're at ten percent, you know, to come down four percent and then you could add the growth into that, so I guess that's.
If we did go down four percent, ten to six or five to six, how much money are we talking?
Million and a half.
Between one and one point five million.
Yes, reduction.
So we're talking reserves and possibly not filling positions, is that would be a fault? Or are there other?
I mean, there's, I think there's some other decimating that we can do in averaging and, and using reserves. And I, I think we can come back with, if you want to give us that five to six range, we'll come back with some pretty good suggestions for you.
I'd like, I'd like five.
Well, as you mentioned, I think it would be a good idea, send a memo out to all the department heads, come out with a number with some of your own numbers. That could accumulate a hundred thousand dollars right there, just in bits and pieces. And then there's some larger numbers that I think we could go into in certain areas.
What's go between five and six at this time, like Grant said? Kevin wants five.
I see four.
She says four? I'm with you.
So we're four to six. How about we just settle on five to start with and see where we hit?
If we, if we, if we ended up, if we ended up at four after growth, I, I would, I would be, I'd be happy with that.
Here's my biggest thing, is whenever anyone is planning on making a big purchase, okay, in your personal life, or building a house, or let's say a correctional facility in jail, that I think is exploding to a higher cost than we initially thought anyway, you, you strap the bacon a little bit, right? You trim it, and I don't feel like we're doing that. And I just, what concerns me is that, here we are asking for more with what the levy increases will be, and then we're going to the taxpayers in November to help finance even more. And so I think that the general public would much more stomach what we're asking for in November, if we're able to sacrifice a little bit right now to get us by the building phases and then finance more things. I just, you know, I just have a hard time asking for more spending, more spending. I just, you know, I just have a hard time asking for more spending, more spending, when, oh, by the way, here's 50 million dollars in more spending that we need to do. And so if that build is truly as crucial and critical to the county as we say it is, which it is, then I think it's important that we trim more to help justify that.
I agree. Mr. Chair, I think those are very good points. And I think Commissioner Angersall's got a good point. If we're targeting the employees, we're not, we're not, by the way. But your costs are past $2 that you've seen an increase of. What have we talked about, all the home placements? Millions of dollars. That went from 2 million to 3 million. That's a million dollars in one year. Housing our prisoners out of county has jumped like 700,000 dollars in one year. The juvenile center, you're being asked to buy two additional beds at 83,500 a bed next year. That's 167,000 dollars just there. These aren't costs that we control. Society is causing these costs, and they're putting them on your back to pay for. So I think it's just named off probably 2 million dollars that- I don't know if you have a lot of control over, unless you just say, we're not taking the prisoners. You're not taking the juvenile.
That's the difference, I mean, I agree with your analogy there, Jenny, but it's, the reality of it is a lot of this stuff is beyond our control, that, you know, I mean, in your personal finances, you might be have some control of that. Here, we don't, and we don't have, I mean, in terms of detention, we don't have any choice. I mean, we, you know, I mean, the only choice is to send, you know, youth somewhere else that costs you twice as much as we spend here. I mean, it's more cost effective to keep our services here than to go somewhere else. And so, yeah, I mean, it's a problem. But like I say, some of this, I think, can be handled by, I mean, to me, that's what we have reserves for. If we got 70 million dollars in reserve and we're having a tough year, and we end up needing that money, then we take it out of reserves and pay it. And we're not dealing with it in the future, so.
I do think you are dealing with it. I think you're giving yourself, you need to give yourself a lot of credit, because you are looking at out of home placements. If we can bring some of those youths back into our county where we can control the cost of them, we may be able to save 40, 50,000 dollars on a 300,000 dollar bill. That's quite a bit, but so you are thinking outside of the box of what to do. Hopefully, the detention center, I know we expect it to not necessarily reduce costs, but be more efficient in bringing people. Maybe we have to look at efficiencies. Maybe we can't staff it to the level that Department of Corrections. Maybe they have to justify to us why they need 52 people to staff it versus 48. I mean, I don't know.
A lot of the money we spend is based on state mandates, too, about them telling us what we're going to do or have to do, or what we have to increase, or, which adds another problem.
Probably a lot of the stuff that we're doing is self inflicted. You know, we approved a three and a quarter percent increase. We improved 400,000 dollars for the corrections, you know. We approved abatement for 400,000 dollars, you know. I mean, that's over a million and a half dollars right there. We're the ones that approved that. And now we're asking them, okay, now we gave this to you, and now you come back and save it, so.
But it's, but I mean, on the other side of that is, you know, we want to retain good employees, and we want to, you know, be able to attract good employees. And, you know, the abatement, we want people to move here, we want people to live here. We want, you know, and in time, there'll be payback on that. I mean, that's the point of doing that. You know, we can jack our taxes up where nobody is interested in coming here, but the whole, I mean, idea, at least to me, is that we want to attract people to live and provide the services that we need.
It's a cost of doing business.
Yeah, it is, it's a cost of doing business.
Well, I'm looking for the feedback and the discussion, and I think we've got now some good solid direction that we'll move forward, we'll bring back some different ones. And you talked about the memo out to the department heads, we certainly will do that. I did talk to them, as I assured you, at the last managers team meetings about the fact that, who would you rather have make these tight meetings? I won't say cuts, reductions, slashes, or anything. But Laurie and I will be very active in looking at some of the estimates and working with the departments. I mean, you've got 297,000 dollars worth of new requests. I think county attorney needs the help. But how do we do that, and how do we package it? We'll talk with Brian about that and see how we can bring a positive effect of-
Well, Matt, for example, he's asking for two, you know, attorneys, and so, I mean, maybe we-
Stage him a freeze name?
Find a way to start with one, or, you know. I mean, we know it's obvious, they need the, I mean, they made a good case for their, you know, I don't think any of the department, I mean, they're not asking for things that they don't genuinely feel they need or probably do need, but, you know, it's, like Jenny said, sometimes, you know, you want, when you go to the store, you want steak, but you buy hot dogs, because that's the way it is, so.
Well, and I think we need to respond to every increase in external agencies' numbers, too, as Commissioner Mojo brought up today. I think we need to review every one of those. And, you know, I grew up with my, one of my kids was heavily involved with extension, and there's been, and I was on the extension committee for a long time before Jenny and him. And every time I'd go to those extension budget meetings, you know, I'd have, I'd sit there as a commission member, and I'd agree with them on their needs and what their requests would be. Then I also told them that I wore a hat of an extension member when I'm there, but when I get back to the county board, I have to also wear another hat. And that's a hat that kind of has to take a look at the whole picture. And sometimes, I could have voted for the increase, as, sitting there, this goes to what Commissioner Mojo's question was, just because we send these committees, are we supposed to support them? You can support them in bringing forward what they need, but then when you get here, you know, that becomes a little bit more difficult job, because then all of a sudden, now you have to say, well, yeah, extension really needed this, or this department really needed this, but in the grand schemes of things, it doesn't quite carry the weight of something else that's important. And that's where it is our job to do that. But, and so I think all these, I think Commissioner Mojo brought up a really good thing, that these external agencies need to also be asked to reconsider, or else we can just make the decision, I guess. Laurie, anything else?
That should do it.
Just go up and find 2 million. Well, we had a good discussion on the budget, and I think it was needed, and it's all good discussion, and. Any other for the comments? With that, we'll go, you have any further, Mr. Bird?
Nobody can come and sign that contract.
Got it on my notes.
Hello, Mr. Chair, we will-
We came forward and go for it.
Bring you something back.
Thank you. Thank you for the updates. Go on, committee reports, we'll start with Jenny this week.
Last week, I attended the FM diversion land management meeting, where there was a overview of what the outreach plan for this first phase of properties, the five to six miles of channel on the northern tip. That was a good discussion, and I guess the more lively discussion occurred when there was a elected official involvement discussion on a proposed sheet that the AE2S had come up with, with how elected officials should respond if contacted by landowners during the process. And I think we gave them good feedback to bring back to their committee on that. Let's see. Then on Thursday, I had the soil and water meeting, where we had a really good update from Belzer's, Brent Arnie, talking about legislative updates. And there continues to be significant dialogue in how buffers will be enforced and who will enforce them. It's something that clearly we've heard about for months, and it's not going to go away, but we have noticed that there is an involvement with our southern watershed that has been very proactive to addressing the concerns. And we feel that we're in pretty good hands there. One big discussion item was that the Wild Rice watershed had declined to help with a 1600 dollar grant match for the Pheasants Forever coordinator. And I think it was kind of contested, and they couldn't believe that such a small amount was not approved by that watershed. But Dwayne Erickson, who we had appointed, offered to pay it himself. Not that that was something that he could do, but it was nice to see that the Clay County rep is trying to do all he can to help the citizens on that. There's a Heartland Trail meeting tomorrow evening in Holly, that they talked about having some representation at as well. And then later on that evening, we had the newly formed subcommittee of the Planning Commission to talk about the animal units required for conditional use permits. If you recall, that this board aligned our definition with what the state standard would be. The recommendation then from this committee would be to, instead of having a 250 animal unit threshold that would automatically require a hearing at the Planning Commission, we did decide to have a 50 animal unit threshold that will be a recommendation to this board. So what that means is that it would eliminate those really high numbers from not having to have a permit. So it would allow, instead of 5,000 swine under 55 pounds, if you had a barn with 1,000 animals, it would have to have a permit. Granted, you'd have to have a building that size, so maybe that's not a fair, but. So it would basically bring that way down to what the 50 animal units is. Frank, you can comment further on that. And then that, then we conclude my remarks.
I just had Economic Development Corporation, the executive committee meeting last week, and we pretty much spent the entire meeting with our attorney going over the bylaws and making some changes that needed to be made, so that was it for me.
Wayne, I had your readings last week, Mr. Chair.
Kevin? Okay, I had the same management meeting that Jenny just talked about, and it was, yes. I really, I'm really pleased that they're coming out with these outreach plans that are dealing, trying to deal directly with landowners who are currently going to be involved, and also reaching out to those who are expected to be involved a little bit later. I really like that idea. As Jenny mentioned, this discussion turned a little lively when it came to some proposals on how elected officials should handle things. And I think all of us who were elected officials there probably didn't agree too much with the proposal that was there. As a matter of fact, I don't think we agreed with it at all.
I think it's important to say that the members on that board from this board will always advocate for the concerns of constituents. And so there will be no muting of that. There will be continued dialogue with constituents. And whether there is a published letter from the diversion authority, I'm not encouraging that.
Yeah, I think the issue is, and, you know, the issue is, is, you know, I don't know that it is really our place to get into the individual monetary numbers that are out there, unless a citizen comes up to me and can show me that, hey, these people have really treated me unfairly. That is, that then is what I think is our duty and responsibility, to go to bat for them, to at least get the answers to why those decisions were made the way they were. But it was a lively conversation, and I think there's going to be some rewording of that, of those documents before they go out. Then the diversion authority meeting was the following day, and at that meeting, I know one of the issues that came up is Mayor Williams asked, you know, all that work that's being done around the old Second Street there, on the City Hall, and the reason that the First Avenue North Bridge is closed is because of all that levy work that's being done, that's part of the diversion project. She asked when it could be expected for that bridge to be opened. And I think the date they gave was October 1st was the date for First Avenue North. And I, boy, I'll tell you what, that can't open soon enough for the traffic congestion issues that we have going east and west. And then I did have, and then there were some other reports by the Corps. They continue to work on designing additional phases. The Business Leaders Task Force, again, reiterated that they are in strong support of the project, and they're going to continue to let the public know that. I want to, Brian, I was hoping to ask you to, at our last meeting, I asked questions about, when the Buffalo Red was here, I was asking questions about the Georgetown levy. When it came to the highway crossings, and I did receive a reply from Bruce, that that number was around 1 million or 1 and a half million dollars to do those road raises on Highway 75. But, and I was going to raise some questions on that, or some concerns that that be put into plans at the diversion meeting. But before I do that, I was wondering if we should, I think we should reach out to Georgetown and to make sure that that's something that they also did want. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to be asking for, you know, the diversion authority to maybe look at doing those highway road raises to, you know, my goal is, I want Georgetown to have 100-year certified flood protection, just like every other community that's going to have with this diversion in place. And, but I don't want to interfere with, you know, if the city doesn't want those, Highway 75 raised on the north and south ends of their city, then I don't want to, I'm not going to get in their way and pursue it. But I, you know, I don't know, Frank, that's his district up there, too, and maybe he can talk to him, too. But if that's something, and then there was something else that Bruce brought up, that there's also some Texas swale or something, or-
Texas crossing.
Texas crossing, yeah, that was also part of the reason. And if, my point would be, is if we were to be able to get the Highway 75 issue resolved, would they be able to do something on the Texas crossing issue?
Well, they got that Highway 100 going, and what the town, too, does has to do, so.
Well, but all of that, my point would be is, I think we need to talk to Georgetown. I would think that if Georgetown all of a sudden sees this, you know, the water coming in from the diversion, that they're want to make sure that they're protected. And it's our, it's the diversion authority's job to make sure that we protect them as well. And I, if it means going and telling MinDOT, I know you didn't want to pay for these, but the diversion authority should, then I want to be able to do that.
Yeah, I mean, they spend a lot of money protecting Georgetown, not fully protecting it. They still have to pay flood interns, because it's not as certified.
Yeah, but, and it's not certified because of Highway 75 and the Texas crossing. But if we can get those-
As part of the diversion project, to get those raised, so they get certified on the 2. That's what you're saying.
Right, but I don't want to, I don't want to do that, it's going to conflict with what Georgetown wants. That's, so, I don't know if there's something, you can reach out to their mayor or whatever, and get some information for us to-
Mr. Chair, I will approach this probably from a highway standpoint, and Bruce's in Georgetown, and DOT, and see if everybody's on the same page and what the problem is. Yeah, we can do something with that.
Something for us to be able to go to the diversion authority on, if we, that's, I think that's all I had.
My meetings too were animal unit, which Jenny's already talked about there, we were, pretty much the only thing we discussed was lowering from two fifty to fifty, and I was at the diversion meeting too, and I guess one other thing that I discussed, and that was a fairly good one, was the finances, you know, they, they kept coming with, say, change orders, here's a change order here. I think we probably had eight or 10 change orders, you know, but you don't have anything to say, how does it affect the whole thing, you know, it's just, we've got this change order, this change order, is it still within the, the budget? And I think they're trying to change that, so. And that's all, the two meetings I had. Brian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess first, first off, thank you for the, for the budget discussion today. I, I know now exactly where all five of you want to go.
And you moved from ten to four.
No, it's good discussion, and it's our job to try and bring all of those concerns and, and feedback together and, and help it along, so. I attended that city-county discussion, reference zoning, and that's what we talked about a lot today. I thought it was a good step in the right direction. I know you'll want to see more results before you weigh in on if it's going in the right direction, but I think we'll get there. Had a meeting with, with our assistant county attorney Jenny, and Georgia and Joe, they have purchased, and you guys approved this, to purchase some cameras that now are installed at the family service center and in the, in the parking lot areas. And what we're doing is working through a policy because you have to be sensitive to people's privacy and who has access to those cameras in the event there's, there's something that occurs out in the parking lot. You don't want to be too informed as to what happened in the parking lot, but, so we have to restrict who has access to that, and if there's been a crime committed or an alleged crime committed, and things along those lines. So it's more, it's more complex than just putting up a camera and saying, here we are. So we're, we're dealing with that. Met with you chair yesterday to talk some of these things over with. Joe and I have met two, three times last week on, on moving forward with, with tightening up the, the last people that will need to be purchased, bought out, and the one you have approved, a rental agreement on the one house, so we're working on the home improvements to, to get them there, in there very soon. Had a discussion with the architect, referenced the jail costs, and that will continue, I don't think positive, I think, results. Lori and I did some budget work and talked in abstract where we could go with this, and it was very good news on the, on the health. Talking about change orders, that's a very good prelude into a, a discussion that we've had. Now, you have approved the demo of the two lots to the north, but in order to prepare the, the ground for the construction of the jail to the south of the law enforcement center, we have a sheriff's garage that is sitting there that we did not include in the bid price. And then also there is a outside prisoner exercise area that has to be removed before we can move forward. So what we're hoping for and what we had at the very end of last week, in fact, Commissioner Campbell inquired about that yesterday, the, what we're going to do is be reaching out to the demo contractor for a quote to, that would be basically a change order, but it really changes the structure of it because we were just looking at the two lots, but since they're on site and we have that garage to demolish, and then the outside exercise area, we'll bring that to you for a change order of the demo project. So that's a good example of, of if we were to have included those in the first ones, we could have, but it was just kind of outside of the limits of what we were looking at. So we will get some preliminary figures on, on that, and that'll come to you before moving forward on that. Oh, and then I met with Mike Love from Houston Engineering and Eric from our highway department in regards to the closing of Eighth Avenue. They've got about two months of work there they plan to do this fall, and it will affect about eighty parking spaces on Eighth Avenue along here, so it's not any small project here itself. They will have to dig up that street and then lay down the new infrastructure, the water lines, the sewer lines, and different things along those line. They figure about two months, and that is to the tune of four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that advertisement, I think, is out right now. I believe Dave came to you for authorization to advertise for that, and then those bids for that project will come to you as far as opening, and then a timeline of when we will do that. So I think it's, it's going to be coming pretty soon, probably first September sixth or something like that. So things are really moving forward, and you're going to see construction being done around here. So I'm just giving you as much of a head note, a head of heads up notice as you possibly can on that. And, Mr. Chair, that was my report. Mr.'s questions?
Thank you. We are adjourned.